My name is Shane Brody. I'm traveling around the country talking to trans people about identity and uh sorry, my dog is now on the table. Identity, uh politics, uh religion, all kinds of beliefs. And uh I'm kinda trying to find people who are from a little bit different point of view than you might have heard before. Uh and so today, I am in western Massachusetts and it's quite hot and very humid out today. And if you've been watching my videos at all, you know that I'm from Alaska. So wow, this is really, woo, it's like being in a sauna. We're in a really beautiful setting. This is a, it looks like a little liberal arts school uh in the center of a small town. And it's just gorgeous out here. There's like uh we're surrounded by old mountain ranges that are not like the west where they're in these uh sharp peaks. It's like all very rounded. There's very deep valleys. So many trees. It's completely forested around here, except for these beautiful brick buildings. There's old mills around here. That's probably why there's a town here is because there's this giant mill that was here. Um anyway, so enough about the area and about me. Uh I'm gonna turn this over for a second so my guest can introduce herself.
Hi everybody. Uh my name is Ashley Shade. We're here in North Adams, Massachusetts, my hometown. And I am a North Adam city counselor. I was elected in November of 2021 and or and took office this past January. So I've been in office now about eight months.
Okay, great.
Yes.
All right. Uh and you were opening that process about being like a trans person and?
Absolutely.
I bet that would be hard though to hide that because you grew up here and it's a rather small town.
Yeah, I I grew up here. I left for about a year in 2013, 2014-ish and then came back and then came out. And my coming out was really shocking and public.
Okay.
Um I worked at a
Shocking?
Shocking. Nobody knew I was trans beforehand. Um I grew up um in this area. I played football in high school and then some my professional football after high school.
Oh my!
Um and I went to college here.
Like up in Canada or something?
Um no, here, here in the United States, um the New England Football League.
Okay.
Um
Is that like a feeder into the professional leagues?
Um not quite. Maybe a feeder into arena, which is kind of, you know, a thing.
Yeah.
But um it's it's you, it's one of those leagues where you kind of, you end up paying to play rather than the other way around.
Hmm, like for travel expenses?
Exactly. You pay dues and equipment and stuff, you know, so everything's on you. So the people who love playing are the ones who end up there.
Right.
Um and I played football for ten years in total between high school and semi-pro. Um and then I moved away for a little bit and uh lived out near Boston for about a year.
Okay.
And uh I had to work seven days a week and two jobs to afford it. And after about a year of that, I said, okay, time to go back. It's a lot cheaper back home.
Yeah, Boston's intense. I mean, even the so-called bad neighborhoods, you know, like maybe down south or something like that, like they're super expensive.
Yeah, I was living in Saugus, which is about 10 miles north of Boston. And uh a three-bedroom back in 2013, I had two roommates. Um and rent was like $2,600 a month.
Oh my goodness.
So it was, it was intense. It was, it was really expensive and and difficult to and I just decided I didn't want to work seven days a week, two jobs every single day and and you know, I would work these 40-day stretches, 45 days and then take uh I use vacation time to take a couple of days off and give myself a break.
That's a great way to burn out.
Yeah, so I did that for a full year and I was like, okay, I'm I'm I don't want to live this way.
Yeah, people on the west coast can really commiserate with that too because like that's how all the cities are on the west coast now. Even places like Portland.
Yeah.
Which was just recently gentrified, like it's just like that.
Yeah, it's crazy. So I ended up moving back and and while I was out in Boston, it gave me a little bit of time to think about, you know, who I am and what I want to be in my life. And that's where I was really able to uh to accept myself. Um it took a near-death experience to really wake me up and and I decided at that point, okay, I I need to make changes in my life to be happy. And um so when I came back, it took me a little time to get back on my feet, find a job, get it, get it, get my own place. And as soon as I had my own place, I basically came out.
Here in North Adams?
Right here in North Adams. Um but at the time, I was working as a pharmacy technician at CVS.
Okay.
And so when you're working as a pharmacy technician, you're you're right there in the public eye. Everybody goes to the pharmacy for medication. Everybody's there. So my coming out was very public and it was just, it was, it was not expected. It wasn't something that I told a bunch of people ahead of time. It wasn't something that I had talked about with many people. I just kind of did it.
Yeah.
And so um my 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 anniversary is actually coming up next month, um September 3rd, so.
Okay. Oh wow, that's, that's really interesting, you know, coming out in a small town. So I'd love to hear about that. Um it seems like here in North Adams, there's, I don't know if it's, this is just my uh first impression of it from yesterday uh when I was here early. There's a lot of disabled people here and there's a lot of older people here.
Yeah.
Is there something to that? Are there special programs here or retirement communities or something?
So um North Adams is an older population. The average age of our population is about 42 years old.
Okay.
Um
So I was right.
Yeah, what happens is um back in, so we are sitting here in the courtyard right next to Mass MoCA.
Yeah.
Mass MoCA is the largest contemporary arts museum in the United States.
Oh, okay.
And so this was an old mill building, um or many buildings.
There's a ton of them down here.
Absolutely. And so this was actually the site of Sprague Electric for years. Um Sprague Electric went back all the way before World War II and actually helped make uh capacitor components for wartime and even parts that ended up in the atomic bomb.
Okay. Um Was it mostly for radio equipment and that sort of?
A lot of, a lot of stuff like that, a lot of like capacitors and and resistors and small electrical components.
Yeah.
And Sprague was here until about nineteen, mid eighties. I think it closed in eighty-four, eighty-five. And when Sprague Electric left, it kind of killed the economy.
Yeah, I bet.
And then about eight years
I always wonder how these small towns here in New England survive.
Yeah.
Because they're a little bit isolated.
We are, especially out here in the Berkshires. Uh North Adams is very isolated because there's a mountain in between us and getting to the other side of the mountain just to get, to continue on Route Two to Greenfield.
Right.
What would normally be a 15-minute drive is a 45-minute drive because you have to go up and over a mountain.
And it's a switchback too, like it's a highway with switchbacks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's, it's um, we're kind of a little isolated up here in North Adams. And then um about eight years later, in the early nineties, General Electric had their Plastics Division headquarters out in Pittsfield, Massachusetts, which was about um about a half an hour south of here.
Yeah.
And so a lot of people either worked for Sprague Electric or GE. And when that closed as well in the early nineties, um it kind of devastated the the economy out this way. And so a lot of older people stayed and retired here, but younger people don't tend to stay because there aren't as many career opportunities.
There is a college here though, right?
There is a college right here, um the Massachusetts College of Liberal Arts. It's very close by actually. And um I'm an alumni. Uh I went to school there. And it's, it's a nice little college right in the town next door. Uh world famous Williams College is right in Williamstown, Massachusetts, consistently ranked one of the top liberal arts colleges in the country and in the world. Um so we do have education here and it's a beautiful place. Unfortunately, um over the years, uh after those companies closed, the economy's been in rebuild mode. And so you definitely see an older population here for sure. And you definitely see potentially more disabled people just because they really don't have the ability to go somewhere else.
Right.
So if they are here
I just noticed there's a lot of um wheelchairs on the streets here.
Yeah.
Which I haven't seen other places here in Massachusetts.
Yeah, the senior community definitely gets out, um the disabled community. We try to make it accessible for them to get around.
Well, it looks like there's a lot of housing in kind of the downtown core here too as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is great.
In a, close by to downtown are two senior housing complexes as well. So that's why you're seeing more of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Um which is good because it's accessible to them to get downtown and get what they need.
So I'm thinking about that because, you know, older people might not know about trans things. And then they're also coming into the pharmacy a lot. So I I guess I'm wondering about your your interactions. Do you still work as a pharmacy tech by the way?
No, no. I I stopped working as a pharmacy tech shortly after and ended up working actually in a nursing home.
Okay.
After, so working with more seniors.
Sure.
Um working in healthcare.
I used to work as a caregiver for uh disabled people. I loved it. I loved it actually.
Yeah, I didn't do anything on the medical side. I was more um office or even um I started as a receptionist, worked my way into the business office.
Okay.
And by the time I left, I had done pretty much every job at the facility that was non-clinical, just kind of everywhere.
I would have continued with it, but the the pay was unfortunately so low.
Mm-hmm, yeah. We don't pay people enough who take care of our loved ones, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Um but yeah, so in in my experience working at the pharmacy, it was mostly okay. There were some people who would give looks that were kind of disparaging.
Yeah.
But nobody would actually say anything to my face. Um when you're six foot two and you used to play football and people know that about you, they're not likely to talk crap to your face.
So these people knew you as a child then, I'm assuming. Okay.
Yeah, a lot of them, a lot of them knew me growing up or knew me from high school or college or whatever or from being involved. Um and so it was, it was interesting at first. You know, there was a lot of support, um more support than I originally thought there was gonna be.
Yeah.
Um people were kind of nice about things, but there were also those people who just would either give dirty looks or not say anything at all. And you know, I got lucky for the most part because most people were not going to threaten me in public, you know.
Right, right. It's very polite here.
Yeah, it it can be. It can be. It can, it has its, it has its own own things, you know.
Um is it there, is there like a cold shoulder kind of thing?
Yeah, there's kind of, there's kind of like, um we love, we love tourists. We love people from outside. We love visitors. But there is this kind of um split of people who lived here all their lives and people who are new kind of thing. There is, there's a little rift there. And there's neighborhoods where where, you know, this neighborhood knows these people and I mean, everybody knows each other. But like, there are definitely factions within, within, you know, and that's normal in any community that there would be, you know, a little bit of divide of of factions and people and families that grew up together and
I did notice coming up here uh along some rivers, I don't know the names of the rivers, but uh there was quite a lot of um you know, recreation that probably brings in a lot of tourists. Do you guys see that here?
Yeah, we see a lot of tourism. We are about to go into our peak tourism season actually, which is in the fall as the foliage comes in.
Really? Oh, okay.
So when the, all these beautiful mountains start turning colors.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, it's absolutely gorgeous. People come in. Um uh summer and fall are really the peak seasons. Uh they had the Solid Sound Festival here at Mass MoCA again this year.
Is that a music, music festival?
Music festival every two years. It's headlined by Wilco and they actually put it on.
Oh, are they from here or something?
No, but they've kind of invested out here. They're invested in in a motel um in town called Tourists.
Cool.
Um they, we, they, one of their, one of their band members helped pay for and re-renovate an old motel and turned it into this beautiful landscape. And it's absolutely gorgeous. And um so there's, there's a lot of, a lot of arts and culture here in North Adams. And that's been the boom of our, of our city. Unfortunately, arts and culture jobs don't pay great.
Yes.
And so we still
So you're going from like industry and high-tech to service jobs?
Exactly. Well, not even high-tech. I wish we would get more high-tech, but what used to be tech.
Okay, yeah.
What used to be
High-tech for the time.
High-tech for the time, yeah. So we've, we've become a very service and tourist-driven economy. Um our largest employers in the area in general are in healthcare, schools, and then tourist um retail or hospitality.
Yeah.
Or restaurant. And as we all know, retail, hospitality, and restaurant jobs don't pay well.
Well, you sound like somebody who is kind of a perfect city council person, right? Because you are from here, you have a deep knowledge of the place, including economics and social stuff.
Mm-hmm.
So I can see why people uh voted you in, even if maybe, you know, it's um, you know, some of them might think it's a little bit odd that you're a trans person or something like that. Who knows? Who knows? But it, I mean, it so, it makes sense. It makes sense.
Yeah, I think I I, you know, I was, I I'm very open about being trans and um, you know, I didn't run on, hey, I'm a trans person, vote for me.
Right.
But I, you know, I I am a trans woman, but here's my experience and here's what I know and here's, here's what I've seen. And here's some solutions that I think could help.
Are you like a solution-oriented kind of person?
I am, yes. I like to solve problems. So I look at a problem, I say, okay, what do we need to do to fix it? And I, that's the challenge I I enjoy.
What's your educational background?
Uh yeah, so I graduated from McCann Technical High School here in North Adams. Um at the tech high school, I did information technology. Um and then I went to school at um MCLA. I was at MCLA for five years. Again, I finished with a
What is MCLA?
Uh Massachusetts College of Liberal Arts. It's here in North Adams. And I finished with a business degree um in um business administration. My concentrations were in um marketing, accounting, and sport and event management. And I also
That's like perfect.
Yeah, so a little bit of everything.
That's perfect for being a councilperson. I mean, business and events and
Yeah, and then I also did a minor in US history.
Okay, and then history, okay, alright.
So we didn't, we didn't have, um the poly-sci program at the college had just about started near the end of my time there. So I didn't get into that. But that's where I started getting into politics. I got involved in the Political Science Club.
Okay.
My second year there. And I uh was president my last two years. So I ran the club and was really involved in things from that aspect.
I once ran an engineering club and it was kind of interesting because I, I wasn't somebody who knew how to like put on events or something, but you just jump in and do it, you know? And then there's organizations that really want to show off what they have.
Absolutely.
So it, they actually make it a lot easier. I even did something where um we, I brought our students into a nuclear reactor.
Ooh.
It's a research reactor. And then also we got to go to Boeing for uh and they were, they did, they had military contracts. So we had to like wear special gear and and all that. So that, that was cool. What kind of, what kind of things did you guys do?
Um we did a lot of events that were politically themed. Um so when I, when I took over as president of the club, my goal was to present both sides of every issue. I wanted everything to be balanced. I didn't want the club itself to appear that it was favoring an issue on one side or another. So like we had um, we had a uh a forum about marijuana and what we had was we brought in somebody from Mass Normal
Okay.
to, to talk about, you know, legalization.
What is the status of that here by the way?
It is legalized in Massachusetts. Marijuana is.
For any purpose?
Yeah, it's decriminalized. Um or or it's legalized.
Okay.
Um up to a certain amount in possession.
I see.
And so um back then it wasn't that. It hadn't yet.
Yeah, it's always like this incremental kind of thing.
Yep. So we brought in somebody to talk in favor of it from Mass Normal. And then we had also brought in a uh a former narcotics drug officer to talk about the other side of the issue. And so that was really something that was important to me was to make sure that all of our events, when we were doing issue-based events, that they talked about both sides of issues.
Why was that important to you?
It's important because you, when you're in college, you're there to understand perspective and and kind of develop your own ideas. And if you're only hearing the same thing all the time, that eventually ends up being what sticks with you.
Yeah.
It's hard to make it in an educated, it's hard to make an educated, you know, rational reasoning behind why you support something or don't without understanding all the nuances around it.
Even though this is a fairly rural area, I could imagine though that a liberal arts college would be fairly liberal.
Absolutely, yes.
And by liberal, I mean more leftist and maybe more democratic leaning.
Very much so.
So did you ever have any uh problems with that, like presenting both sides, both sides of an issue?
Not so much because the way we did it was we gave everybody the opportunity to speak and and make their own minds up.
Yeah.
We didn't do it in an aggressive way where one side was right and one side was wrong. We didn't, you know, if we put on something that seemed like a debate, it was more of a convers- more of a conversation. So it wasn't to, the, the purpose wasn't to like have a winner. The purpose was to hear all kinds of ideas and formulate your own opinions.
Right.
And for some people, it backed up what they already believed in. And some people, it made them look at it and be like, oh, I never thought about it from that perspective.
How does that inform your work now as a somebody who is a leader in a community? And also you're an activist of some sort that is beyond also being a councilwoman?
Yeah, yeah. You know, uh one of the, one of the boards that I serve on as as a city counselor is the IDEA Commission. It stands for Inclusivity, Diversity, Equity, and Access. I'm the co-chair of that commission as a counselor. And one of the things, one of the important things and reasons why this commission came about is so that we could look at things and how they might affect people that are different from us.
Okay.
And how they might affect different communities when we're looking at an issue or looking at a problem. Because a lot of times what happens is legislation or things are introduced and people only see them from their own perspective. And they only see them from solutions that benefit people like them.
Right.
They don't understand how a simple piece of legislation that's designed to help people and they think is designed to help people can be used to weaponize and be used to hurt other people.
Yeah. Can you give a specific example?
Um well, for example, red flag laws when it comes to guns, right?
Is that a big issue here in Massachusetts?
Massachusetts, yes. In North Adams, I wouldn't say too much. But um for example, if you use that as an example, right? Somebody can call and say, oh, we think this person might be dangerous and then have their weapons taken away. Now, if that person is ex-military and they have PTSD, what they're gonna do is they're not going to go get help for their PTSD because they don't want their weapons taken away because they're getting mental health help. If you're a trans person who's transitioning and you go to see a counselor, which many of us do, and we have therapy
Sometimes it's required.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And somebody uses that against as saying that we have mental health issues, that can be used to remove weapons from us and as an excuse. So these kinds of things can be weaponized against, you know, communities that it's not meant to be weaponized against.
Right.
And that's a problem. And so
And so many people need to actually access therapy and that sort of thing. So if there's a stigma about it.
Exactly.
Then it makes the problem worse.
Exactly, exactly.
Besides even thinking about the
Sorry?
Yeah, it's okay. Besides even thinking about, you know, the right to defend yourself, but you know, it's, it further stigmatizes getting help.
Exactly, exactly. So people, people will, people will make the choice, I have to do one or the other because if I'm doing this other thing, somebody might use it against me to try to hurt me.
Right.
And and that's, that's how I try to look at everything that we're doing. I want what we do to help people and to do it in a way that doesn't cause harm or causes the least amount of harm as possible. And I think that's the part that gets lost in a lot of law legislation. People always want to help others, but they don't, they don't look at it from the perspective of reducing harm.
Right.
And and to me, that is really important.
Or sometimes they don't look at it, look at it in terms of a rights issue.
Exactly.
So some people will use the excuse of helping in order to just control others.
Yes.
Or they don't realize that taking away a right is actually a much bigger problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, for a specific incident.
Mm-hmm.
You know, uh that's pretty common actually. Uh so thinking about that, like you're a, you're a councilwoman who um you know, likes to present many kinds of ideas, you know, which, you know, that that comes out of your history of doing that in in college and and that sort of thing. And now you're doing it as a councilwoman, which is great. Um and there's probably, you know, a lot of diversity around here, I would think.
Some, yeah.
Yeah, so it's Massachusetts, so I'm thinking there's probably, you know, some liberals out here. Um there's probably some people who vote blue. There's probably some people who vote red. Uh there's probably a lot of hunters, I would think. Uh I even saw some signs for moose, but I I'm wondering about that, if I would actually see a moose out here. But maybe, possibly.
Definitely deer.
Deer, yeah. Um yeah, I was just living in Alaska, so there's a lot of moose up there. Um should we wait a second for the bell? I don't know. Actually, no? Okay, good. I I've been in places where the bells just go forever.
Yeah, it'll ring a couple of times, but I think we'll be okay.
Alright. Um so what I'm wondering is what your own personal uh political beliefs are or philosophy, basically?
Yeah, um so it's, it's something that's been evolving over the years for sure. Uh when I first got into politics, I I described myself as fiscally conservative and and socially moderate to liberal. Um and then I
What do you think of as being fiscally conservative?
Fiscally conservative, I think of um not, not what it is today, that's for sure.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking you.
When I, when I think of fiscal conservative, I think of um, I think of balanced budgets. I think of ensuring that there is enough money already in the bank before you spend it, rather than spending money you don't have. And I think
I bet that's really an issue here because the economy has declined here.
Absolutely. And I, and I think about, you know, um efficiency. I think about processes. And I think about getting as much money to its intended purpose as possible without waste. So that's what I think of when it comes to to fiscal conservative.
Yeah.
Um that's not what conservatives are today for sure.
Right.
Um so I I kind of moved away from that. Uh and then I, I got involved in libertarian circles and libertarian politics. Um I was a member of the party for about four years. I actually recently left the party.
Yeah.
Um I got involved in 2018 and
What got you involved in that?
Yeah, it was, it was kind of weird. Um I I guess I started seeing libertarian um or are my views aligning more libertarian during the 2016 election? Uh I found myself very drawn to Gary Johnson and his, his ideas. And I was like
How would you describe him?
I would say center libertarian. Um I would say he's pretty center. He's, he's actually got some some traditional party ideal, ideas around himself. And so, but I was, I I I respected him and his ideas far more than Trump or Clinton.
Okay.
Um and so I I became a big fan of Gary Johnson at that time. I didn't really get involved in the circles back then. Um but I voted for Johnson and I was proud of that vote. You know, it was one where I was like
Did you feel like you were throwing away your vote?
Never, no, no. To me, throwing away your vote is making a choice because you feel like you have to make a choice that even if it doesn't go with what you believe in, you have to make that choice. To me, not to throw away.
Right. Or not voting.
Yeah.
You're kind of throwing it away there too.
Well, you know, if you have garbage and garbage.
Sure.
Sometimes you don't pick garbage.
Sure.
Sometimes you leave that
You can also write in.
Leave that one blank or write in, exactly.
Write yourself in.
I've, I've left, I've left some ballots blank before and I don't feel like, but I will never put an X next to a name of somebody I don't believe in.
Yeah.
If I don't believe in what their ideas are or I don't believe in what they're saying, I'm not going to vote for them no matter what.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to win elections based on defense.
Yeah.
Voting is supposed to be for who you believe in. It's not supposed to be for the lesser of two evils. And I won't cast a ballot for people who don't align with my principles and values, period.
Sure.
And and that is really important to me. To me, voting is integrity.
Every election cycle that's brought up about um about third-party voters, that either they're throwing the election towards somebody in particular or they're throwing their, their vote away. Or um whomever they're voting for is not gonna win, so why are you doing it anyway? Or um you know, why don't you support my candidate and and that sort of thing? Do you have anything more to say about that? Because I, I see it coming up again. And it comes up every time, so
Yeah, I mean, I I got into some arguments um with some people over the last election with Trump and Biden. And you know, I was told, you know, why would you support or vote third-party when we're at war against Trump?
And that would have been Joe Jorgensen?
Um Jorgensen Cohen was the ticket. I actually worked directly with Spike Cohen. Um so I was part of his team.
Okay.
Um which was, which was great, working for a vice presidential candidate.
Sure, I bet.
Helping with policy and shaping a lot of his LGBTQ messaging.
Sure. I, I must say though, that I am not impressed with that, that person, uh Spike. He seems to go with whatever's going on.
Yeah, unfortunately.
He was, he was very, he was talking about justice a lot before when he was um in the vice presidential, presidential candidate. And the presidential candidate was Joe Jorgensen.
Yes.
Who was definitely more left libertarian, I would say.
I, she, she was, honestly, that was her messaging being pushed. She herself is probably more center or even right-leaning.
Okay.
But her message was being pushed more left.
I don't know her, so I, you know, I don't know those details. I'm somebody who sort of has looked at the LP from the outside, the libertarian party from the outside, so I don't know all the details. But
Yeah.
Definitely the messaging was more left libertarian. Um why do you think that was? Definitely the messaging was more left libertarian. Um, why do you think that was being pushed, by the way?
Um, it was being pushed because that was the direction that we needed to go in. Um, you know, we didn't. Unfortunately, the LP at this point has been kind of co-opted and taken over by.
Get into that in a minute.
By kind of an alt-right faction and uh it's why I'm not there anymore.
Yeah.
But really, when we talk about libertarian values, there are economic values that are usually more aligned with right-wing ideology. But we also believe in humanity, libertarianism, a fundamental prin- principle of libertarianism. And what I believe in is that no matter who you are or where you're from. All human beings have the same rights. And their rights are to be able to live their lives however they choose.
Right.
As long as they aren't hurting other people. They should be able to love who they wanna love, be who they wanna be, be their most authentic self.
Yeah, I think that 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 people who conflate um libertarianism and conservatism don't understand that.
Exactly.
There's a, that, it's a real freedom component.
Exactly.
The the conservatives often talk about freedom, but really they're about control.
Yes.
Yes, whereas libertarians in general, ones that are actually really libertarian.
Correct.
Believe about, uh, in freedom.
Yeah, free will, free will, you know, if free will is good enough for God, it's good enough for me, you know?
Definitely.
So, you know, having the ability to live your life and make your own choices and be responsible for who you are. And, you know, there shouldn't be government and systems in place that keep you. From being who you are, being your most authentic self. People shouldn't be trying to hurt you for living your life and trying to be happy.
So the party was um pushing a more left-leaning libertarian message in reaction to how. Uh, general politics was going down.
I would, I would say so for sure. Um, you know, Biden was really a center moderate and. Didn't have much appeal to anybody.
No.
And and Trump voters, you weren't gonna win them over, right? If the opportunity to to get other votes came really from the left and the center.
Yeah.
And from people who 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 respect other human beings.
Right, and it's not disingenuous either because the libertarianism is actually very diverse.
Yes.
I mean, you can think of everybody from like, I mean, I'm I'm, I'm not saying that Gandhi was a libertarian, you know. Big L libertarian, but he was on the left side of that, you know, people who fight for other people's freedom. They're on the left side of that. There was also people who are more rightists like An- Ayn Rand.
Yeah.
You know, other, other philosophers. And so it's really, really diverse.
Absolutely. So when I got involved, I got involved back in twenty eighteen and the way I actually got involved was really um pretty cool. I um, I sent a message on Facebook to uh the party chair, Nicholas Sarwark at the time. And I sent him a message, not expecting a response, but just saying hello. Um, I I find myself aligning with a lot of libertarian principles and I'd really like to be involved, but I'm not really sure that. And in seeing social media, that trans people are really welcome or belong in this party. So I asked him, you know, is is there space in this party for trans people to be here? And he actually responded and pretty quickly and said, yes, absolutely, trans people belong in the Libertarian Party too. We welcome everybody.
Interestingly, I had, I don't know if you noticed this, but I had an interaction with him online recently. He retweeted something from a, from somebody he knows, uh, who's a journalist. Who's actually saying some really bad stuff about trans people. Um, and actually I'm finding that quite a bit recently. It has become very popular to take on certain. Reasonable sounding, and I put that in quotes, okay, reasonable sounding soundbites. That are coming from uh bigotry. And incorporating it. You know, I've seen liberals do it, I've seen libertarians do it. And it it shows how effective actually that propaganda is. And I saw him do that recently and I questioned him about it. And he didn't take responsibility for it at all. And yeah, it was a little bit uh disheartening, I would say that.
That's, I I I don't know if I've saw that.
Yeah, probably not, but I mean, it was just a Twitter whatever thing.
Oh, yeah, I'm not on Twitter.
He didn't take responsibility for it, which which bothered me.
Yeah, um, and so, uh, you know, in continuing that conversation with him, so he said, yeah, trans people belong here and I said, okay. If you're willing to put out a public message saying that trans people are welcome in the party, I'll, I'll, I'll get my membership today and get involved and. He did.
How many uh trans or queer people do you think were involved?
Um, at that time, there there are a lot of queer libertarians, a lot. Many of them aren't public about being queer. They just kinda live their lives and it's nobody's business.
Sure.
Um, but there are a lot more queer people within the libertarian movement than than you would realize and um. It does make a lot of sense if you think about it.
Yeah.
The party was founded back in nineteen seventy-one. And and one of the first and and it was the first political party that said. We need to legalize gay marriage, we need to end the wars, and we need to legalize marijuana. And that was party platform since nineteen seventy-one.
And that's, I believe that's the first party to to really do that here in the US, right?
Yes, yeah, so you know libertarians have always believed in the rights of LGBTQ people. And so um it was surprising to me to know that there were so many um queer people within the movement. And as I started to get involved, um, within a month. I was reached out to by another trans libertarian who immediately pulled me in and started teaching me policy and brought me onto a campaign. Um, Larry Sharp is running for governor in New York right now. He ran in twenty eighteen. His twenty eighteen campaign was much better than the current one. Um, and and I I was involved in part of that team and being able to learn policy and learning um. You know, different ideas and different things there and kind of helping crafting policy messaging.
Yeah, interestingly, I mean, I keep bringing this up, all these people that you're bringing up.
Yeah.
It seems like there's kind of a not-so-good side, um.
For sure.
Uh, Larry, who I very much enjoyed following online, who seems like a really genuinely nice guy. He just got an endorsement from the, what's called the Forward Party.
Yes.
Which was just formed or coalesced uh uh like a week ago or something and it was um. Basically some uh Republican um offshoots. Forming their own little parties, Sam and Ram, I'm not sure what those stand for, but. And then they joined with Andrew Yang. Who used to be a a Democrat. He ran for president, then he ran for mayor of New York, failed both times. But Forward is dominantly, and I'm gonna say absolutely, you know, dominantly, like ninety-nine percent. Reagan, Trump, and Bush, et cetera.
I think, I think more, I think they're definitely more moderate, for sure.
I don't know about that.
I, from my interactions with them, I've seen a lot of the Reagan-esque type. Um, but I've also seen a lot of the the Teddy Roosevelt type.
Yeah, I'm glad that you see that, but I have not seen.
I've, I've seen a mixture of of, that's the range. You you're basically a lot of.
Lot of, you know, DeSantis and Trump and Trump supporters.
Haven't seen so much DeSantis and Trump. I've seen more like John Kasich. Um, you know, those moderates.
I haven't heard anybody say, mention John Kasich or.
I haven't seen people mention him, but when talking about ideas, that's who they remind me of.
Do you, do you trust that that's what they are going for? Because.
I think.
They are funded directly by big GOP donors.
I do think that a lot of disenfranchised GOP people who don't want any part of the Trump craziness are kind of going there. So it's, it's, it is kind of more conservative than than a liberal, for sure. But I do think it's, it's gonna be a more of a a a center-right rather than a far-right, which is kind of where the GOP has kind of landed. So we'll see what ends up happening with it. I'm, I'm, I'm kind of surprised the Yang influence hasn't brought in more leftist-type people.
Oh, it has, it has, actually. There are the so-called Yang Gang folks. Uh, a lot of them are focused on UBI. Interestingly, though, the Forward Party doesn't actually have a platform.
No, it doesn't, yeah.
UBI, UBI is not a part of that. And it's probably not gonna be a part of it. I mean, honestly, it's probably not.
Yeah, I mean, it's something they have on their website. I I think the main, the main things that they have is UBI, um, ranked choice voting. Um.
They don't have UBI up there.
They don't anymore. They used to.
No.
They did for a while.
No, there's no platform beyond ranked choice voting and open primaries.
Yeah, open primary was another.
That's it.
They did, they used to have UBI up there, so maybe with the merger, they took it off.
Yeah, it's uh, I've been hearing things online about things being too woke. You know, and this is from people who are major cheerleaders. Of this, this new movement that's coming, is that they don't want things to be too woke. And to me, that's code for uh leaving out justice issues.
Yeah.
So I don't see much of a difference between.
The old GOP.
Yeah, the, the, this and, you know.
The older Republican party.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any difference. I just see this as a way to get more Republicans in office.
Yeah, I mean, uh, if I look at it, these are probably really a lot of Bill Weld, Bill Weld type, Lincoln Jaffe type. That, that kind of, you know, old, old-guard people who are just. Yeah, I I could definitely see it going in that direction, for sure.
The reason why I bring that up is because they endorsed Larry Sharp and now he's very much like into them. And now I can see how that's uh the case because there's no, really, there's no more libertarian party. I mean, it's out there, it's tweeting, it's. You know, raising some money, but not very much.
Very little.
Uh, it's being blocked from um attending conferences that are libertarian, yeah. Um, so we're, we're looking, personally, I think we're looking at the demise of it. I think, I think Reno, the Reno conference was the actual demise of it, but there are some people who've been sort of lingering and holding on. I did notice that LGBT people, though, left pretty much immediately.
Yeah, I I had left a few months before and and I think that kind of triggered an exhumist among a lot of queer activists.
Why exactly did you leave?
Um, I left, well, at the time, um, uh, so my involvement in in libertarian circles went from. Getting involved in a governor campaign immediately. And throughout the four years I was there, I worked on ten different political campaigns ranging from local all the way up to presidential level. Um, and I also got really involved in the party. I was one of the main voices of of LGBTQ people within the movement. I became the chair of Outright Libertarians, which was um the main LGBTQ group within the party.
How old is that? Has that been around for a while?
It's been around since the nineties.
Okay.
Um, and and is currently.
That makes sense, cuz uh LGBT rights organization's kind of coalesced during that time.
Exactly, so it it is, um, it is an organization that is actually looking to rebrand itself. That is Outright USA and kind of move away from the libertarian focus.
Took the libertarian out of that name.
They did. Um, we, uh, I was, I I recently went back to the organization, was re-elected chair last week. So I'm, I'm once again serving as the leader of that organization in the transition away from the Libertarian Party. Um, but my move, my leaving from the Libertarian Party stemmed from, at the time, I was actually the chair of the Massachusetts. Um, the Libertarian Party of Massachusetts, the state party here in Massachusetts. And we worked really hard on on building. Um, a political party rather than an issue-focused party. We were focused on elections.
Okay.
We wanted to win elections and and my campaign was kind of the blueprint.
Okay.
And so when I won my election, a lot of the the folks who identified as as Mises folks. Um, part of that caucus and that group, which is kind of the alt-right pipeline group. They got really upset because once I won, now everything that I was saying was true and it went against everything they stood for. So they started pushing back, getting really nasty, um, you know, started using a lot of uh bigoted language. Started, you know, personally attacking me, personally attacking uh another member of the board who was a a black man. And they really laid into us online and on social media, started threatening all kinds of things. And so we ended up getting to the point where we got fed up and we expelled all of them.
Yeah.
Um, it was like, if you don't wanna be here, then don't.
The inter-party stuff here.
Yeah, i- if you don't wanna be here, don't be here. I I like, it, the, the purpose of a political party is to win elections. I don't have time to be a philosophy club, so if you wanna do that, go, go over there and start your own club. What they really wanted was they wanted to try to get rid of us so they could take control and have their delegates for Reno, so they could be part of that Reno takeover.
What I've heard is that um they used some of the weakness in the LP and the um in your rules. In order to take over because you could have delegates come in from other states.
Massachusetts, you can't. Massachusetts, you do have to be a Massachusetts resident, but a lot of. A lot of the, to be a delegate, you can qualify, like, in Massachusetts, you can qualify to be a delegate after thirty days of membership.
Okay.
You can qualify to vote at convention after only thirty days of membership. Um, so.
So basically, they would bust people in.
Yeah, they, they would basically get a bunch of people to sign up last minute and then bust them in to it. And they would just get random people to sign up, friends, random people, people from other political parties, just to come in and vote with them.
Right.
And so that they, they could put their people in place and 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 have control over the delegates.
I, I keep wondering, how, how is it that, I mean, I'm sure that some of you saw that starting to happen.
Yeah, we saw it for a while.
That not be, how did procedurally, how come that wasn't stopped?
It's hard to stop it because changes to bylaws need to be done by full bodies of the convention. So, and and a lot of bylaws-type changes usually require two-thirds or seven-eighths votes.
Okay.
So as soon as they had a couple people in, they had enough to block it and can change it.
Okay.
Right, so it, it was, it was a structure issue that that was always there. And and the Libertarian Party has gone through this before. They went through it during the eighties with with the coach. Uh, uh, and uh with Ron, Ron Paul back then. They went through it again in two thousand eight with Bo- with Bob Barr.
Were these also times when they uh sort of denuded the language of the platform from ju- from, away from justice issues?
Yeah, yeah, a lot of the platform was, was, was deplatformed at around those times. Um, two thousand six, the Portland massacre, the LP had a really large. In individual rights-based platform. And it was, you know, almost a two-hundred-page platform, which is probably too much, but they gutted it down to like ten pages.
Oh, my god.
They just, it was, that's why they call it the massacre.
Wow.
Um, and they were able to do that because people didn't show up.
Yeah.
And then, and then that led the way to Bob Barr in two thousand eight and that led to, you know, terrible things. And then the party started re- rebuilding really, I would say around twenty twelve, when Gary Johnson first came over and and really.
And people were pissed about him being the presidential candidate.
And people were mad because he was considered a Republican. He wasn't one of us, you know, the libertarian. The, the Libertarian Party's biggest problem has always been this, you're not a real libertarian, because you don't believe exactly what I do.
Sure.
Um, there's also this idea of.
But also there are libertarians who are not libertarian.
Absolutely.
They're authoritarian.
Exactly.
So it's a strange joke to make.
To, to, to me, the, the, the baseline is this, if you believe in human rights and you denounce harming people. And you denounce trying to hurt people and and things that do hurt people, like bigotry. Um, and violence, then uh I'll try to work with you.
Yeah.
Even if we don't agree on issues, I can respect you as a human being.
Yeah.
But if you don't believe in human rights for everybody, if you do believe that certain people deserve certain rights over others. If you believe that certain people are superior to than others. Um, or if you're okay with with bigotry and hatred, then I want no, no part of you. I don't wanna associate with you. Uh, that, that's as un-libertarian as it gets.
Yeah, it's really too bad that this has happened at this time, too. I mean, it would be bad at any time that. Basically, an alt-right group would take over the Libertarian Party, cuz you guys had or have or had, I'm not sure what this current status is. Ballot access in fifty states.
We did, yeah.
Uh, so here we have this party that's now being taken over by the alt-right and, but if it was actually libertarian with. You know, the erode, erosion of um personal freedom right now, you know, access to healthcare. Uh, choice, uh, around abortion, you know, all kinds of stuff, the state coming down on parents.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we really need a voice out there saying. We need to talk about personal freedom here, like in a real way.
Absolutely.
And it's not there.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, no. And unfortunately, this new faction, when they did take over in Reno, they, they removed the abortion flag from the platform. They removed that bigotry is irrational and repugnant from the ba- pa- platform. Because their new chair had said in an interview, yeah, we, we, we're okay with bigots joining the party as long as they vote the way we want them to.
That's right.
Um, so really, it's, it's, to them, it's about winning and slamming and owning the libs.
Yeah.
And about fighting against quote-unquote woke culture.
Yeah, and it's not passive either. I mean.
No.
On, on, they have driven people away.
Yes.
They have harassed people.
Yes.
Even at the conference.
Yes.
Uh, they, I, I know women who wanted to, who are very libertarian, who wanted to become involved with the Libertarian Party and they're like, no way.
Yeah, no.
No way, even before Reno happened.
Yeah.
Because they would be basically, you know, harassed online, threatened, you know.
Yep, yep. Yep, yep, yeah. It's, 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 it's an unfortunate thing. Um, you know, while I was there. I'd, I'd like to say that, you know, the work that I was doing made a difference, e- especially in pushing. I would say during the last presidential election, pushing more justice and LGBTQ messaging. Um, a lot of that was me pushing back on, on, on both Joe and Spike and getting them to get their messages out. Um, I was directly responsible for several of their messages and around those things.
Yeah.
And so I, I, I'd like to say that, that's the direction that I believe in, is talking about. You know, um, if we're gonna talk about liberty, the, the most disenfranchised people need the biggest voice.
Yeah.